So, well, we'll call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Polley.
Present.
Trustee Laffin.
Here.
Clerk Clavitch here. Treasurer Ellery Summers here. Trustee Crawl.
Here.
Trustee Reiner.
Here.
Supervisor Skibby.
Here. Moving forward to the adoption of the agenda, before we get going, I have two, one correction and one amendment. Under minutes, Michelle, let me know that on the January 24th, it was 2022 regular meeting. And then the amendment actually will be the movement of closed session between old business and new business.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the amended agenda as presented. Are there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the amended agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose the same. Agenda has been adopted. This is the first opportunity for public comments. If anybody has any public comment, you can stand to the podium, state your name, and the podium would be yours, sir.
I'm here, Gail and Wagner. I own the camp off to Chippendale where they want to change the name of the road. I've had the camp going on fifteen years, fourteen, fifteen years. That road has been Chippendale for over fifty years. It's a private road that goes through my camp is the first road right off 23. And the people in the back are the ones that want to change the thing. They're from downstate. They come up here on the weekend. I just live out there all summer. I oppose the changing of the road. I think it should stay because there's a lot, your plot maps and whatever else, you don't have to be changed and all that, you know, that seems kind of silly. One other thing I got to say is, I don't know, about three, four years ago, four July, that sign was stolen off the road. So I called here to get it replaced. Well, whoever answered the phone, I don't remember now, want to know if the sign was blue or was it green? So I don't know. I went up and down the road. All the signs are green on the road on 23. So not one by about a month or so later, nothing happened. So I called back and they're looking into it, you know. Well, couple, three more months went by. I know some of your road commission. I had the sign made up. If you go down 23, there's only one white sign on 23 that says Chippendale. Why is this such a big deal now, you know? When I wanted it done, nothing was done. I had to do it myself. Now somebody down there at the end of the thing wants to change and I'm opposed to it. That's all I got to say.
Thank you very much for your comments, sir. And actually, we could probably have conversation. This is public comment, so it's not a Q and A, but we can give you some.
You have to talk up. I'm real hard here.
I said, we can, we can probably have part of the process described to you after our closed session. It's actually a function of the county mandating that we go through this process.
Yeah.
So, thank you very much for your comments, sir. Are there any additional comments online? If so, please use the bottom taskbar to raise your hand or send a message so that we can address you appropriately.
I'm not sure everybody got a letter.
Everybody on that road got a letter, but this is, yeah. Seeing no additional public comment, moving forward to the payment of the bills. Is there a motion to make payment of bills?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table to make payment of the bills. Is there support or been moved and supported? Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Clerk Clavitch, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polley.
Yes.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Moving forward to the minutes of January 24th, 2022, a regular scheduled meeting and February 3rd of 2022, a budget hearing. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of both meetings unless there's a correction or amendment. Some, we have a motion on the table to approve the minutes of both meetings. Is there support?
Support.
Oh, well, the youth ran down there. So we have a motion and a second on the table to approve both minutes. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose the same. Minutes have been approved. Moving forward into the correspondence, we have three items of correspondence. One from the FERC, which is Federal Energy Regulatory Commission about the dams in our area. A notice of hearing from DTE through the state of Michigan and a letter from Dr. Donald Spade. I'll entertain a motion to receive and file the correspondence as presented. So we have a motion on the table to receive and file and support further discussion.
Yes. This Donald G. Spade, you know, I would like that letter to be sent to all planning commission members.
It already has been.
Has been.
It was actually at the planning commission meeting at the last meeting. He hand delivered it at that meeting. So we can forward the letter.
So brought to that meeting. I remember seeing it now.
Yep.
But is that going to be sent as a letter that we all have other than it passed around the table?
We can make sure that that happens for the planning commission.
It should be part of the planning commission record that'll stick with the case all the way up.
I read through some of those correspondence at that last meeting because of a discrepancy. So make sure that that gets sent to the PC. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion about correspondence? If not, all those in favor of receiving and filing this correspondence signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Moving forward into old business, this is the point we introduced ordinance 149, which is the floodplain management ordinance. This is the meeting in which we would adopt said ordinance. Tim, you have anything to add to?
Sure, just to remind everybody that the township was contacted by an official from Eagle in the state of Michigan. And he informed us that our community currently participates in the National Flood Insurance Program. As a member of that program, your community must have an ordinance that properly adopts the new flood insurance rate maps effective prior to June 1st of this year. And so that's what we're doing now. And you're well in advance of the deadline. So if we do a motion to adopt the ordinance that was previously introduced, that'll get us where we need to go and then I'll take care of getting it published and getting the information to Michelle. So she and Nathan can sign the ordinance.
We have a recommendation, yes.
I just have a question. I mean, we get these things where we're trying to pass a resolution and doesn't seem like we have a choice. As, Tim, what is the consequences to us if we say, you know, if citizens object or we don't?
Yeah, I think Nathan's better equipped.
Yeah, the consequences, the first and foremost, the last and the first is we would actually negate our ability to receive any FEMA federal funding.
Of course.
Yeah, so there's always strings attached.
There would also be an insurance consideration for those people that are, if we abandoned the flood maps, people that live along coastal areas would have to jump through lots of other little hoops to satisfy that they're not in a flood zone. Mortgage companies would have an issue with it.
So is there, is it better for the citizens who are in the floodplain to have this passed?
Absolutely, yeah.
All right, that's, that's kind of what I.
This is the TransX and we actually started this, the introduction of the floodplain mapping scenario from FEMA at the planning commission well over a year ago, by not in two years. The maps are available and hard copy. So if you'd like to look at the new TransX and overall water height or ordinary high water, that's really what it really stipulates. Okay, is there a motion to move forward with the adoption of ordinance 149?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table. Is there support?
Support.
Moved and supported. Further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polley.
Yes.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Clerk Clavitch, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. So I'll entertain, at this point in time, I'll entertain a motion on going to closed session. Motion and support on the table. Further discussion?
Floor was support.
Correct, and Laffin was the motion. Hearing no for the discussion. Roll call, please.
Trustee Polley.
Yes.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Clerk Clavitch, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. We are entering in 11:11. Okay, we're now officially in closed session. I do have a chair, but immediately following our. Okay, we are back in open session. Tim, is there a recommendation?
I am recommending that the board make and adopt a motion authorizing, settling the tax tribunal case of Meyer Inc. versus our township by reducing the 2021 taxable value of their property to the sum of $3,400,000 for assessed and taxable values.
Is there a 2021?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table. Is there support?
I would support it with the proviso that part of the agreement is that we'll also carry forward to 2022, 2023. Can we do that?
2022.
2022, you can't. I don't think it will.
Oh, okay, it's not a fiscal, then it's, okay, just a calendar year. Okay, 2022.
So is there a friendly amendment to include the 2022?
Thanks for what I say, miss.
So we have a friendly correction to the motion is also held by the.
They supported.
Okay, further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Clerk Clavitch, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polley.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Thank you very much, Chris. Moving forward into new business, Mac, you are online. If you could unmute, Mr. Bell.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
And this is, I guess I'll look to you, Mac, of how to pass a motion open. Do we need to open a public hearing for this? Or that's typically our follow through for public hearings?
Yep, no, this is a resolution to establish a public hearing for your February 28th meeting. So this could be a simple motion or adoption of the resolution to establish the public hearing for your meeting on February 28th, at which time you would open the public hearing and have a standard process for the public hearing.
We have a recommendation to move forward with the resolution setting the public hearing for the Elkin Township Brownfield redevelopment authority in regards to the Elkin Retail North Development. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Well, I'll support it.
So we have a motion and support. Further discussion?
So this might be, I'm not sure, but I know we got Elkin Retail North, but maybe, should that be West or is that something?
That is their company name.
That's their, okay, okay.
But I can appreciate your ability to follow compass.
We have too many wrong compass headings.
Yeah, we have a couple different areas.
At least it wasn't east.
Nope, so we have a motion and support to establish the public hearing on February 28th. Any further discussion?
Now, who takes care of the details of that? Does the clerk have to do that or does?
Mac's been helping us through this entire process.
There'll be publication requirements.
Yeah, and Mac, you're going to be taking care of the publication for the public hearing, correct, sir?
Yes, and actually, unless there are requirements on the township's perspective from a charter or some other condition, Act 3D1 does not require publication of the, of the public hearing. Does require notice as you would for the Open Meetings Act, but there are notices to taxing jurisdictions, to each of the taxing jurisdictions that levy taxes on the property that I'll be developing and distributing on behalf of the Brownfield Authority and the township.
I would just assume do whatever we normally would do so that we don't have some suggestion that we're doing something outside of the ordinary.
I'll, with the clerk, I'm putting together a notice for the public hearing.
Thank you.
It's the cabinet's lot. So.
I'll cast this one.
Yeah. Um, okay, we have a motion to establish the public hearing and support any further discussion?
For the resolution.
For the resolution, yes. For the public hearing, seeing no further discussion, roll call, please.
Clerk Clavitch, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polley.
Yes.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes.
Okay, we made the motion and seconded, because I can do this for Michelle.
Laura made the motion and Trustee Reiner supported.
Thank you. So I'll do that for you, Michelle.
Thank you.
And then I will actually put, Mac, I'll start an email thread. That way you, Tim and Michelle can make sure that everybody's in line with our postings and our advertisement. That way we're, we're good to go on this front.
Yep, absolutely. Just a quick note that the notifications have to be provided to the taxing jurisdictions no later than 10 days before the public hearing. So they'll be distributed to them prior to February 18th.
Happy that. Thank you very much, sir. Are there any additional questions for Mac while we have him online? Well, thank you very much for your time, sir.
Look forward to seeing you on the 28th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving forward in the agenda, the M.DOT Performance Resolution for Municipalities. This was. You got it. And Tim, you kind of went through this as well.
Yeah.
So this is actually a resolution. I guess I'll just read it because there's no other way to get around it. What was that?
You shouldn't read this older.
Oh, hey, got to keep sharp. The Performance Resolution for Municipalities is required by Michigan Department of Transportation for the purposes of issuing to a municipality an individual permit for use of state highway right of way and/or an annual application and permit for miscellaneous operations within state highway right of way. Result, whereas the Charter Township of Elkin here and after referred to as the municipality periodically applies to the Michigan Department of Transportation here and after referred to as the department for permits referred to as permit to construct, operate, use and/or maintain utilities or other facilities or to conduct other activities on, over, and under state highway right of way at various locations within and adjacent to its corporate limits. Now, therefore, in consideration of the department granting such permit, the municipality agrees that, one, each party to this resolution shall remain responsible for any claims arising out of their own acts and/or omission during the performance of this resolution as provided by law. This resolution is not intended to increase either party's liability for or immunity from, toward claims, nor shall it be interpreted as giving either party here to a right of indemnification either by agreement or at law for claims arising out of the performance of this agreement. Two, if any work performed in the municipality is performed by a contractor, the municipality shall require its contractor to uphold harmless, identify and defend in litigation the state of Michigan, the department, and their agents and employees against any claims for damages to public or private property and for injuries to person arising out of the performance of the work, except for claims that result from the sole negligence or willful acts of the department. Until the contractor achieves final acceptance of the municipality, failure of the municipality to require its contractor to identify the department as set forth above shall be considered a breach of its duties to the department. Three, any work performed in the municipality by a contractor or subcontractor will be solely as a contractor for the municipality and not as a contractor or agent of the department. The department shall not be subject to any obligations or liabilities by vendors and contractors of the municipality or their subcontractors or any other person that's not a party to the permit without the department's specific prior written consent and notwithstanding issuance of the permit. Any claims by any contractor or subcontractor will be the sole responsibility of the municipality. Or the municipality shall take no unlawful action or conduct which arises either directly or indirectly out of its obligations, responsibilities, and duties under the permit, which results in claims being asserted against or judgment being imposed against the state of Michigan, the Michigan Transportation Commission, the department, and all officers, agents, and employees thereof and those contracting governmental bodies performing permit activities for the department and all officers, agents, and employees thereof pursuant to the maintenance contract. In the event that the same occurs for the purposes of the permit, it will be considered as a breach of the permit thereby giving the state of Michigan, the department, and/or the Michigan Transportation Commission a right to seek and obtain any necessary relief or remedy, including, but not by the way of limitation, a judgment for money damages. Five, the municipality will, by its own violation and/or request by the department promptly restore and/or correct physical or operating damages to any state highway right of way resulting from the installation, construction, operation, and/or maintenance of the municipality's facilities according to the permit issued by the department. Six, with respect to any activities authorized by a permit, when the municipality requires insurance on its own or its contractor's behalf, it shall also require that such policy include a name insured that the state of Michigan, the Transportation Commission, the department, and all officers, agents, and employees thereof and those governmental bodies performing permit activities for the department and all officers, agents, and employees thereof pursuant to a maintenance contract. Seven, the incorporation by the department of this resolution as part of a permit does not prevent the department from requiring additional performance security or insurance before issuance of a permit. Eight, the resolution shall continue in force from this date until canceled by the municipality or the department with no less than 30 days prior written notice provided to either party. It will not be canceled or otherwise terminated by the municipality with regard to any permit which has already been issued or activity which has already been undertaken. Be it further resolved that the following positions are authorized to apply to the department for the necessary permit to work within the state highway right of way on behalf of the municipalities. Now, the three individuals that are listed on this with one addition is myself as supervisor. Kathryn Nguyen is our operator in charge representing Flies and Vanderbrink. And also Mark Rachi, the construction manager, engineer from Flies and Vanderbrink. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion to move forward with the resolution for the performance of municipalities to work within the state highway right of way.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. We have a motion on the table for, we have a motion and support. Further discussion? Yes, Trustee Reiner.
I don't recall, and I think it happened before I got here, but I, can I be assured that our contract with F&amp;B? And I assume that's most of what happens is that either F&amp;B themselves or subcontractor under them or perhaps contracted directly with us would do damage to a right of way or a road surface itself when working on water and sewer lines? Is that most of what we're talking about here?
Yes, this would be for our municipal utilities, our water and sewer transmission.
So are, are we requiring in our contract with them indemnification and insurance coverage and those kinds of things?
Yes.
I'd like that assurance.
Yeah, we, and I can lead that to Trustee Laffin, as he and I worked through the place F&amp;B contract. We covered our indemnification aspects, and I think that's been held forth by Ms. Nguyen, our operator in charge with their subcontractors that work within said right of way.
Now, does this include private landowners whose, when we, when we do damage that's within the right of way, road right of way, but it's really in their lawn or whatever, or to their shrubs or whatever it might be, but, but is subject to the road right of way, does, does it include putting them back hole as well?
Our, actually, our water ordinance, ordinance 135 covers those spaces that restoration will be put back because of water and/or sewer utility work be restored to its original predate conditions. No, not 135, I don't know why that came out. Our water, I can't think of the ordinance right now. I just read.
I have a question for Kathryn. If you should have to hire either Bedrock or Don or Carter, would, do they secure the right of way bond or do you?
They have not had to secure right of way bond in regard to this. They do have insurance requirements that mirror the insurance requirements we have with the township.
Okay.
So that, you know, they are fully covered the same that we would be in regard to that and the township and, you know, insured on their policies.
And then should a, should a property owner want to repave their driveway or something like that, we're out of that completely, right? At that particular point in time, then the property owner and whomever they are working with have to secure that right of way bond to assure that the highway will put back in the position that was prior.
Whatever arrangements they would make with the, with M.DOT and/or the county gold commission.
Okay.
The thing is that generally unless there's a team that they want to place over township, you know, water purgences, it would be the only time we would get involved in regards to that.
Okay.
Yes. So is this for one project or multiple projects?
This is any project that would fall within their right.
So I'm just curious, but is this something new or is this something that we just never did before that we need to do?
This is just a streamlined process. It's come down from M.DOT. We've only in, in the past, well, the first instance that any right of way work that really arose was the construction of the new jail on 32 West. And that was a not as clean and as linear of a process. This is now kind of coming out of any municipality. This is kind of a new format that they just want to have a blanket so that we don't have to look at things on a case by case. It is one more feather in our cap that way. We still have one less process to work through when we're operating within the M.DOT. I will entertain, we have a motion to.
We have a motion.
Motion and support. Any further questions for either Ms. Nguyen, myself, or? If not, I'll, we'll go, please.
Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polley.
Yes.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Clerk Clavitch, yes. Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Moving forward to the next item is the naming of the road, which has been for, as we just previously heard, nearly 50 years, been known as Chippendale Drive. This has been a conversation with the county. This is a process of readdressing. And unfortunately, as it's been posted as Chippendale Drive for 50 years, it was never followed the appropriate steps that truly have it. And that's where this gray area has come to be. And I guess I, if you and I have had the conversations, but if you go to the podium, that way you can explain.
Yeah, not too long.
Beautiful, thank you.
How it came up is one of the problems. Wanted an address, but you couldn't move it to that point. And we tried to get an address on 23 itself. He asked because your orders that the state, how the address that blocks. So we just sold that page, give them an address on 23 because that's from the bail bond. So. No, somebody's going to move that. For an address, if someone wanted an address, that's where the bail bond would happen. But the whole office. No, UPS weeks are packages on the gate. There's more than even looks.
Yeah, the gate's on my property. Right. They don't know where.
That's where the canard came in because Elkin County Treasurer owns that block. Okay, and probably somewhere it would. Okay, and probably over seven days it would.
You mean the lot that we drive to to get to our.
Yeah.
Right, because it had a water assessment on it and way back when, uh, whoever had it. Gave it back to back tax. And she's honored it ever since. I would, we assumed that maybe the county treasurer. Won't name it, uh, but they.
The burden. Yeah, they 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 put the burden back on the township, uh, and I've actually spoken with Mary Catherine Hannah, who is uh. The administrator, executive administrator for the county. Um, because their own ordinance. Is not clear and now we're right back to the worst case scenario of having a property owner. Or five parcels deep, which the two principal properties as was stated are actually in the holding of the Alpena County Treasurer. Uh, because of the back taxes that where they need to amend their ordinance because it is not clear. Um, and I don't know how to really move forward now that we have a con- a contestment to the actual name and the process. This is.
Is your address Chippendale or is it twenty-three?
It's twenty-three.
Okay, so.
So that's in violation of the county's own ordinance. Yes, trustee Ryan.
I think part of the question. I've got two or three questions here, but part of part of the question I guess is. How do you locate a right, a a actual physical address when you have an emergency call to that place? And I take it that this road has got a locked gate that prevents people from getting down there, even an ambulance if it needed to. Now, does it have a public lock on it like for utilities and for the fire department and so on? Well, what about what about for for people like utilities and fire departments and so on to get through? Do they have a master key to some lock on there?
The only one that has a key to that is AT&amp;T because they're covered. That's the only one that we know of.
The other question I have is, is there another Chippendale in the county? Is that part of the problem?
No.
Do we know that?
No, no, this was we, Chris and I went back and forth uh. And trying to gain some clarity uh to this issue because even their own ordinance would state that the principal first parcel off the primary road would be. The property holder that should be starting this process. Because they are the now the owner of said easement.
Does the road go from US twenty-three to another county road?
Or no, no, it does not go all the way to Piper Road.
No, no, but it's not pretty cool.
So in that scenario, the county treasurer should be the one initiating this. Right, according to their.
That's why we sent the letter.
Yeah. It wouldn't back it wouldn't back.
If I know Chippendale was in there.
It's that's never had another road, it's never had it.
And uh, it has a sign on a road on the state because. They asked me, was the sign blue? Or was it green? So the the state must uh put that sign there, you know? Because it was a regular sign, you know, an old sign, you know?
And I think that first of whether private property or private loan.
See, that was there before that Oak Ridge subdivision was ever felt.
Yeah.
Yeah. That the property I'm on the. Would you see Dr. Bocess?
Yeah.
Well, that was one time.
That was way back, you know?
But I think I think that that property owner was questioning the address.
Who was the property? Can you tell us who it is?
Uh, Jamie Morel. Marco, Mark.
I may have to see who you are.
Yeah.
I I don't.
Marco.
You know, so he didn't have to have a P O box. And. We didn't know. And I said, well, what name? It was we had no name, he said, well, Brockel. And that's 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 why we sent the letter out. It needs someone, you know, like yourself and, you know, a different view of what they.
Yeah. So now is where we're at. Uh, trustee Foley, yeah, the question.
How many people are on this private road?
Six.
Six.
There's six hunting camps back there.
Oh, there's six hunting camps. Nobody lives there full time.
No, he doesn't live there full time.
But they could.
Well.
Well, there's no law or nothing there.
And and Kolski's old brothers.
Yeah, Kolski had, he did that after it burned down. Kolski had our products. Also like thirty thousand dollars put underground, probably in eight camps. First, he died, you know, back. So. How this, how this was all changed hand.
Someone downstate law, you have to pull the shot, young guy.
So this is an easement road going into these six people?
And it's been an easement or private road.
And and the easement is called.
I have no problem with the easement, you know, I just care about me. The only thing I'm worried about now, they're talking about. Going the road, they got about half a mile of road in there. And it's nothing but mud hole.
Well, you were probably down there.
You probably were down.
Yeah, I've been so often.
You see the front part is nice gravel. I had a fault. Truckload of summer crude gravel put on that that low spot there. They were gonna help me because I've never, I've never seen that.
Timing.
You know how they go.
Yeah, they like that way.
So. Yeah. So we have, we have a couple of times, but trustee Foley?
Yeah, so this. This easement right now has had the title of Chippendale.
Right.
And somebody now come along says they want to change that.
Yeah.
Want a name on it, but technically it doesn't have a name in all our records.
Official name.
But everybody knows about Chippendales.
It's been there for fifty years. So trustee Laffin, are you, are you done, trustee Foley?
Yes.
Okay.
So does this start here or does this start at the county?
That's, that's, that's the conundrum. So they have an ordinance. I've spoken with Mary Catherine. And she's even tipped the hat that the ordinance is outdated because. It should be by the technicalities. It should be the Alpena County Treasurer that names it. Now. The the municipal process, the township would actually agree by vote and secure and lock in that name. That is the process that falls upon this board. The conundrum is. They have a described easement and they are not the owners nor is the the individuals that is requesting the name change. The owner of it is the principal property that is first adjacent to the primary road. And that falls under because of back taxes, the Alpena County Treasurer.
So if there was a. Motion made to send this back. To the county of Alpena with the township recommendation of maintaining the name. That that has been known as years would be an appropriate way of looking at this.
I don't think.
Yeah.
He just wants an address.
Yeah, so.
I was shooting for skip.
He just threw out, he just threw out Bronco Trail as as a name.
He has, he has a bunch of Bronco.
Yeah, he, he restored, like, he restored.
So it has nothing to do with Western Michigan.
Trust, trustee Foley?
So this is a private road that is an easement on your property?
It goes, goes through my property.
They have to drive through my property to get to there, yes.
Okay, so they. It go through your property to get finally to this.
The other five camps.
Yeah, the other five camps.
So it's only a short easement on your property to get to their camps?
Yes, it's probably, uh. I don't know, it's probably five, six hundred feet, I don't know, you know?
But it goes through your property to get to that property and you've named that little bit of strip to start with Chippendale.
No, we haven't named it.
It's been there one fifty years, I have to have that fifteen year.
Right.
That's right.
So according to the letter, this gentleman only wanted an address number. So why can't he get an address number with with US twenty, with either US twenty-three or Chippendale? Why does it have to be changed to?
It won't allow. Since the actually, it'll be confusing for nine one one. The address is about twenty-three south. Cash and go out there.
So you want.
He ain't gonna know.
So you want it to be Chippendale, referenced as Chippendale, right? So why can't the guy just get a number and leave it Chippendale and then somebody go through the process of making that official record?
And that's what we're here, we're actually trying to, because we don't have in this matter. We have zero clarity by the county's own admission to their own ordinance of to the principal steps that should be taken are already negated. This individual simply wants an address and so to move forward, we actually as a board have to adopt the official name. So trustee.
So I would say that. We keep it Chippendale, make a referral back to the county to take action on their end, but make a recommendation that it stay Chippendale.
Would you like to make a motion to that effect, trustee?
I would make that motion.
I've already seconded.
Oh, and we already had a second.
I, the the thing for discussion purposes, further discussion, is I believe the numbers have to be assigned to each property.
Yeah.
By equalization, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
So it is going to go back to the county for that purpose of, even if they accept our name.
And hopefully, moving forward, now that this has seen some light of day as to a failure of their own internal ordinance, maybe they could amend. Their ordinance so that way we don't have to waste hours out of a three-day volley.
Unless I put that in the motion.
So the the motion is to name the road Chippendale Road?
Yeah, yes.
That work?
It works for us, I mean, we, you know.
Well, that was, that was, that was our.
Now, if I see any male dancers out there dancing on the side of that road.
Well, yeah.
Well.
That's why we replaced it so we could tell everybody to party school on Friday night.
There you go.
Really? And with, and with that being said. Yes, Laura.
So once we make this motion, it goes to the county, who then will go through the process to make it official record? They'll do it at the county?
He will uh, he will make sure that it's not, it's not a.
Another Chippendale.
In the county, Chippendale, uh, you know, it's not competitive and that's no. Where the actual parcel is, you will assign a number.
So. If there's a fire out there. All these compartments gonna have to get in that gate, the home company, kids getting in.
He, he, well, he should have always.
No, no, that gate is is set up that you can lift it off and where the lock is, it's got a slide too.
Yeah.
If the, if the fire department or uh family has it. They can, they can get through with no problem.
It can if it's, yeah, I can't.
But for emergency. So. So we we need to get this back into uh the the context of a board meeting. Um, we have a motion to to remain as Chippendale, uh, black ties are are nonetheless.
Simon's.
We have a motion. Well, that's wonderful. We have a motion support further discussion. Uh, there will be some, but uh hopefully it'll be clarified at the county level. Uh, roll call vote please.
Trustee Crowe?
Yes.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Foley?
Yes.
Trustee Laffin?
Yes.
Dirk Palavich, yes. Treasurer Elroy Summers?
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby?
Yes. Okay, well, we'll move forward on to uh budget adjustments.
There's no number on the mail. And I went to the.
The county equalization department. I can tell you, if you take a left out of here, you get to Ninth Street, you take a right on Ninth and you go into the back parking lot and have that conversation. So.
Okay.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your attendance. We appreciate you guys coming. Yep, so moving forward with the agenda, we have budget adjustments. Um, thank you very much, Chris, for the clarification. Um, we have uh general fund, public safety and water fund. There is actually a a late edition I would like to make mention and so that you can read it on the general fund, the first page of the three. Uh, and if you want, I can make you a copy of my notes, but it will be. Uh, one additional uh GL transfer uh from one oh one two five seven. Eight oh three point zero 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 will be plus one thousand dollars. And from the same department of one oh one two five seven eight oh one. Point zero 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 will be a reduction of one thousand dollars.
Do you know the names of those?
Uh, the latter one, eight oh one is professional and contractual services. I know off the top of my head, but uh. I can't think of.
Oh, you know what? I've got my budget brought here.
Oh, it's legal.
Legal, so we have legal uh is getting a thousand dollars, professional and contractual is losing a thousand. Um, outside of that, uh, I'll entertain a motion uh to move forward with the budget adjustments as presented.
Someone.
We have a motion on the table to move forward with budget adjustments. Is there support? Or?
Who supported that?
Uh, trustee Laffin. Otherwise known as Stevie.
Little.
Yes, uh, discussion, trustee Ryan.
So I'm looking at two oh five, three, three, six, nine, July, seven, zero, one, zero. We're moving. An additional five thousand dollars into snow plowing and that looks like it's at this this office. Is that just? Is that right?
It's for fire department.
Both.
Or both stations?
Yeah.
The question I have is, I mean, I've used my snow blower less this year. Than most years so far. Why are we over budget on snow plow?
Under budget.
Oh, that's under budget? We're taking from snow plow?
Right.
We're under budget, so we have to put.
Yeah, we're putting five thousand in. Why, why are we using?
Because we have um over three thousand dollars in January for keeping the fire department.
It's all the clear.
Well. I mean, okay.
So it may be, it may be an egregiously high adjustment, but we're, it was forecasted that we stayed at current pace. Would rather make one adjustment rather than only anticipate a later one and then come back with the second adjustment. So maybe the second adjustment is to take monies back out of snow plowing.
I'm just, I'm just thinking this is a lighter winter for snow than normal.
But they have a lower threshold for getting plowed and cleaned, the fire departments than we do like this parking lot out here.
What is that threshold?
Two inches? Yeah, it was two inches when we put out that bed, I think it was two inches. It was, it was, it was pretty minimal.
I know, like ours doesn't get done on weekends.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, I, I, I salt and shovel too. Uh, I'm always welcome to sharing a pair of gloves for anybody that would look.
And we appreciate.
You'd offer that to us, really?
I would.
Wow.
Your hands are above my size. So with that being said, little Stevie. We have a motion and support to move forward with the budget adjustments. Any other discussion? Hearing none, uh, roll call please.
Trustee Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Foley?
Yes.
Trustee Laffin?
Yes.
Dirk Palavich, yes. Treasurer Elroy Summers?
Yes.
Trustee Crowe?
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby?
Yes. Moving forward in the agenda uh is planning commission appointments. Uh, the two appointments are actually just renewals of uh Chair Hilbert for a one-year term and Larry Garing uh for a one-year appointment. I then entertain a motion to that.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table to move forward with the planning commission uh renewals of one-year terms for both Chair Hilbert and Mr. Garing.
Support.
So moved and supported further discussion.
I thought these were being staggered.
This is, this will stagger them.
Okay.
This will be actually.
Two every year will.
Yep.
Okay, two.
We are now officially, it took a few years to get the seat racing.
Is there what, three year or?
Three-year max term and so uh this is a renewal at one year. Now every all, every member is actually on a one, two or three, so we, every year now we'll just have. Uh, two renewals or two appointments.
Excellent. So the new person we appointed last meeting?
Yeah. What's? Is that a three-year term? Three-year term. The two newest are at the, Dylan and Corey are both at three-year. Uh, and so now we have three, two, one, so that way we have a true cycle. Um, we have a motion and support on the table for the discussion. All those in favor of approving the one-year renewal appointment, uh, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Okay, moving forward to uh item six, uh, the DPW two thousand six GMC Sierra. Uh, Lori, yeah, this on the agenda.
I mean. About getting it fixed? Yes. Yes. I wanted to sell it to.
Fuck is this peruse?
So, I, I mean, I, the only, I didn't bring anything on it about getting it repaired. Have it on the agenda most of the time, try her about possibly selling it. Did you bring this?
You're the one who emailed saying this should be on the agenda. So I think, I think that's what you're.
Oh, that's where the confusion is in, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Somebody says that needs something needs to be on the agenda.
Oh, because, well, no, I, I wasn't, sorry.
No worries.
Well, because if, if it's three thousand dollars, I thought it was going to be on the agenda anyway, if it was going to be up to three thousand dollars to get it repaired. I mean, do we want to put money into this?
No, we want to take a, no.
Suggestion from.
Well, the, the township, I mean, it is, uh, a piece of township equipment, you know, just like the tractor is a piece of township equipment that the township retains. Um, it's not used primarily as a vehicle for transport, is used because it has a winch on the back of it for pulling pumps from pump stations. If it were to be, um, sold, and FNB is not interested in purchasing it, just so that you know that, um, then the township would have to make other arrangements every time a, a pump needs to get pulled out, either to get a wrecker or something else. Um, the other thing is, is that the township owns a sewer jutter, and that vehicle has the correct hitch configuration for pulling the jutter. So those are the two primary functions of it, is for pulling pumps out of list stations and to use it to tow the jutter to whenever we need to clean sewers.
The jitter is, is that a, what do you call those?
It's a trailer. It's just a self-contained, I believe it has.
Yeah, it's a trailer.
So it's a standard hitch?
No.
It's not the.
No, it's not a, it's not a, it's not like a goose neck hitch or whatever, and, and, you know, this is, but it is, you know, that is, uh, got a five hundred pound, or five hundred gallon water tank on it, so it does have a, of a towing, you know, weight of about four thousand pounds plus. So it's not exactly an insignificant piece of equipment to tow.
Well, then I guess at this point in time, I'd entertain a, a motion to table this matter, because if there's not a point of sale, um, we're just far out our options, uh. Well, one, uh, the, the winch, the winch apparatus would be actually, uh, could be facilitated with the wiring harnesses that the odd uh, with the winch, I believe, for power supply. Uh, but that is actually a slip into a two-inch, uh, receiver hitch.
You put a winch on a, on a four-wheeler or a side by side.
Well, I was gonna, what, I wondered frankly the same thing, because when I looked down this list, and I see the note that we could, we could spend three thousand dollars easily, uh, I would totally agree, that this is probably outlived its usefulness, and I wonder if we couldn't take things off of that truck.
And it's something we, we can look into. And, you know, that's the thing is, the, the, the truck that FNB utilizes has a cap on it. So there's going to be, you know, we'll have to work around whether we would be able to use this, the winch assembly with that truck, or what else would need to happen. As far as the jutter, then there would have to be some change in the hitch configuration, so it could be towed by a different vehicle. And I think that's a halftime pickup, I don't know the, the rated towing capacity of the, I think it's in excess of what the, the weight of the jutter is, but we just, you know, want to make sure that we, you know, let the township know that that piece of township-owned equipment needs some TLC if you determine that you need to, wanted to keep it.
So I, I think what would be best is to have further discussion, uh, away from the table, so there again, I'd entertain a.
I'll make a motion to table this to review options.
Yeah, we have a motion on the table to, motion on the table to table. So. Further discussion.
I guess. I guess the reason why I was confused about this is because I didn't do any research with Ward's Auto Repair, and I saw the three thousand dollars, and I thought, well, it should come to the board, like, do we want to fix it, do we not? And that's exactly kind of what happened to me.
No worries. Uh, so we have a motion and support to table, uh, this agenda item. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, all those in favor of tabling signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose the same. Uh, matter has been tabled, uh. Probably get back up, unfortunately, or fortunately. Um, the next item of new business is the Dixon Engineering and Inspection Service Agreement.
So, um, you are probably aware that recently there was a leak in the M thirty-two water tower. Um, so that happened a couple of weeks ago, and there had to be an emergency repair. Uh, had to bring in a, a welding unit that was willing to work on a water tower in the middle of January in Michigan. And so mobilization and everything else ended up being a pretty significant cost. Uh, I think it was eight thousand two hundred dollars, um, maintenance allowance to have that emergency repair. Um, the tower was last inspected in twenty seventeen. Um, at that time, the condition assessment was not great, and obviously it has not improved in the intervening five years. Um, per recommendation of Dixon Engineering, who has performed past water tower inspections, and also the specification and bidding for the Piper Tower project, that the tower should do a complete drain-down inspection to determine if there's further corrosion or what repairs would need to be made inside the tower, and to put together specifications for repair and recoding of the tower. Um, so the last time it was done in two thousand and seventeen, it was done with a remotely operated vehicle, an ROV, inspection while the tower was filled, which is not the most effective way of determining if there's a lot of structural repairs that are needed. So they're recommending a drain-down inspection as soon as the wa, the weather breaks enough so that we don't have to worry about the tower turning into a giant popsicle. So probably end of March, beginning of April.
Yes.
I, I guess I'm curious, on a complete drain-down, tell us what that means, other than the obvious. Now, we're going to empty the whole thing.
We will empty the entire tower and isolate it. Um, they will actually power wash the inside of the tower. There's a price in that, there, uh, an hourly rate for power washing. They estimate minimum of two hours, depending on how much silt has developed in there. Um, and then they will do an inspection, an engineering inspection. They will take pictures, they will do measurements, et cetera, and identify what the repairs are needed. After they have entered the tower, then the tower will be disinfected and refilled with water to the overflow point and tested for bacteriological contamination before it is then put back into service. So this is about a three or four-day process in order for this to take place.
And what does that mean to all of the water users?
What does that mean to all the water users? We will try to minimize the amount of water that has to be drained out of the tower. Um, and, but at the, basically for the water users, um, if there is in that quote that they would place, if necessary, pressure-reducing valves, what we would do is then, instead of having the tower maintain pressure on the system, that it would be pressurized by the pumps that normally fill the tower, and that that would prevent any overpressurization of the system. There's also an interconnect between the north part of the system on M thirty-two and the south part of the system on Hobbs Road, uh, which we found out during the Piper Tower debacle, because we found out that it wanted to overflow water going to the south. So we'll have to determine whether those will actually pressurize the north part of the system if M thirty-two is taken out of service. Uh, we don't have a lot of records on that, because the last inspection was not done with the tower being drained, but this is probably a good opportunity to determine what needs to be done before the tower have to be taken out of service for a couple of months in order to do the repairs and recoding process.
So we'd also have an, an, an additional expense of refilling that tower.
Yep.
Well, refilling the tower, you know, basically instead of, you know, draining and filling it over the course of a normal day, the same volume would be refilled and then utilized for the, you know, once it's put back into service. Not, once you, when, when you refill it, that water can be redistributed out to the distribution system. It's only the amount of water that would have to be drained for the initial inspection that would be lost as, you know, unbilled water.
Yes, just.
Um, I take it that, that, uh, all we're doing is inspecting it, then we're going to find repairs that need to be done, which aren't in this.
No, they are not. And, and the, the ballpark that we have for right now, based on the twenty seventeen inspection, and the, the, you know, the cost of the repairs and the current labor costs and materials, et cetera, is in excess of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to have the tower repaired and recoded interior and exterior.
Of which that's, uh, been an ongoing conversation with the CIP, of which we'll be getting into at our next budget hearing. But, uh, Laura, did you?
So the eight thousand two hundred dollars is a separate cost.
For the emergency repair.
Emergency repair. So is that getting paid out of our maintenance?
Yes, that will be put on the maintenance allowance.
Okay, and then we don't have any idea what this other project would cost.
Well, like you said, the, the inspection cost is, is pretty well fixed, with the exception of having to do some additional power washing, so that was, I think, four thousand six hundred dollars. Um, so that, that would be a pretty minimal cost. Then it would allow you to determine the, the estimated costs more accurately of what the tower project would be, and then give you guys a tool to budget for that. Um, and, and the reason that, you know, the tower was inspected in two thousand and seventeen, and then it has not had maintenance, is obviously, you know, as, as this board knows, there was not a lot of capital planning for the water system previous, you know, to that time. And so, um, you know, normally what would happen with this is that money would be set aside on a routine basis so that the three water towers would be inspected on a five-year cycle, as recommended by American Water Works Association, and then have routine recoding projects at ten- or twenty-year intervals. Um, and then there's also an option to do what they call cathodic protection, which would hopefully extend the life of the interior coating on the tank. So all those things are options, but that, you know, we can't dial back time. We have to look at them now and then going forward and determine how the township is going to approach this.
Are you aware of any grant monies that might be available for something like this?
Well, it just so happens that one of the things that came out of the last meeting that FNB Engineering was at was an intent to apply for some funding, and I know this was brought up during that process, um, as far as, you know, making it known to the state that you guys are in the queue to get some infrastructure funding, and this might be something that would be included in that. But that's something that the township will have to determine.
Yeah.
Once you know, one, what the cost of the tower project would be, and two, what mechanisms are available for any uh, financial assistance in order to, you know, perform that work.
All right, thanks. So. Yeah, uh, and just to kind of expound upon that last statement, uh, I worked with, uh, Brian Rowley, uh, with FNB Engineering, who was present at, uh, a, a previous meeting. Uh, and we have actually submitted, uh, the ITAs that, that intend to apply, uh, for both the water and the sewer to a combined total of fifteen point eight million dollars worth of projects. Um, so that is in the works, uh, we, our foot is in the door, we'll be taking those corresponding next steps, trustee Reiner.
Did the repair that cost eighty-two hundred dollars, will that have to be redone as a more permanent repair once we draw down?
I mean, they've basically put a patch on it, you know, for them to, to do that without having to take the tower out of service. And thankfully, the, the leak that occurred was not any lower, because it reduced, obviously, the operating level of the tower until the repair could be performed. So they'll have to make a determination. Um, when the welders were here and they were grinding down, because they had obviously make a clean surface in order to apply a weld on the outside, they said they, they could tell that there was corrosion, and so Dixon will be able to determine to what extent that needs to happen. But it may, in fact, have to be cut out and a new plate installed, or some other more permanent fix in the near future when that takes place. The other concern, of course, is if there's one place that it's corroded to the extent that we've developed a leak, there could be more. Um, they don't know if it is from some kind of internal structural damage um, that could have occurred, because there was ice that formed in the tower, um, at some point in the past, or if it is just the deterioration of the coating that was not addressed, um, before it came to this point.
So, moving forward, uh, we have a recommendation to move forward with a, uh, the Dixon Engineering, um, survey, uh, and inspection service. Uh, uh, please let Mr. Binkowski know that I only have one E in my name. Uh, but we, I'll entertain a motion to move forward, uh, with, I believe, the, the total of this, uh, service, as it stated on, in a later page, on page five of ten, is, uh, roughly thirty-eight hundred dollars. And then with some other ancillary hourly costs.
Yeah, there's, there's costs in there, estimated costs for power washing, and then also if pressure relief valves need to be placed in the system.
So I, I'd recommend a motion, uh, to move forward with the, uh, inspection service not to exceed five thousand dollars. Would give enough wiggle room to, to get a proper survey, uh, so that we can actually look at how to, uh, maximize the, the life expectancy of this, uh, pedisphere. Is there a motion to that effect?
I make that motion.
We have a motion on the table to move forward with the inspection of Dixon Engineering not to exceed five thousand dollars.
Support.
Been moved and supported, further discussion. Yes.
Again, it's, again, it's getting paid for out of the maintenance cap.
No, this isn't. We're approving it, so we, we would get the bill directly.
Okay, so where are we?
We, okay, so we actually will have some options, uh, and this was, eventually this conversation was going to take place. Uh, we have a, a, an intent to apply, but we also have, uh, over nine hundred and fifteen thousand dollars that we've secured from ARPA, and that may be an angle of conversation that we look at, having a conversation, because our budget constraints are realistic, uh, and extremely tight, um, so.
So are you asking what GL?
Yeah, I just.
Well, I wanted, this expense won't be until next fiscal year.
It real, real reasonably, it won't be. So we can, we can tip the hat, and then we're going to have to, with the CPA, they're going to want to have it, if we approve it now, to have the expenditure coming out of this fiscal.
Yeah, because they go through our minutes and make sure that there's money to cover anything we've approved. So, yeah, we need to have that in the GL.
So, to, to your point, what we could do is at a subsequent meeting, transfer, uh, five thousand dollars out of the GL that holds and holds the ARPA collection monies.
Um, but would we pay it like on a professional?
Contractual.
And we have money in there.
We have money currently. So I would, that'd be my recommendation, is to take it out of, uh, eight oh one, uh, five nine two, five three seven, eight oh one, zero, 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 which is professional and contractual services.
What was it, five nine two?
Five nine two, five three seven, eight zero one, point zero, zero, zero.
And I, again, I, I just want to point out that this money that we put in this little fund is getting lower and lower, I mean, and.
I thi, I think we're all cognizant of it, but. Johnson &amp; Johnson doesn't make a Band-Aid that fits on a five hundred thousand kilogram pedisphere. So we're going to have a realist conversation on the fifteenth, when we get into those budget hearings, when we go through the CIP.
This just concerns me as well.
It's, it's concerning, it shouldn't be concerning at all. Uh, so we have, uh, a motion and support, uh, to move forward with the, uh, inspection services, uh, to come out of, uh, five nine two, five three seven, eight zero one, zero, 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 uh, not to exceed five thousand dollars. Any further conversation and discussion? Seeing none, roll call, both.
Dirk Palavich, yeah. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Corl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polley.
Yes.
Trustee Lapp.
Yes.
Supervisor Skitty.
Yes. Uh, moving forward, uh, and the agenda is, uh, a recommendation from, uh, Chief Hanson, and he is on line. Could you unmute Mark, please?
Good afternoon, everybody, can you hear me okay?
We can. Can you?
All right. I sure can.
Okay, we're at, uh, a new item, uh, eight, uh, full-time hire recommendation, chief.
Uh, we did an interview on Mr. Waterson, uh, we recently put him on as a paid-on call, helping us out, uh, and the personnel committee met, uh, we did an interview, I've contacted all his references, uh, comes with, uh, great references to, to us, and I would like to recommend Mr. Waterson, uh, for a full-time position with the township.
I'd like to make that motion that we hire Scott Waterson for a full-time position, um, contingent upon the physical. We've already done the background checks. We've done everything but the physical for Mr. Waterson.
So we have a motion on the table to follow the recommendation of chief to hire, uh, Scott Waterson, uh, as a full-time player-fighter contingent upon, uh, the physical. Is there support?
Support.
Uh, give it once again to the young buck, uh, moved and supported, uh, further discussion, trustee Polley.
How's it being paid for?
How's it being paid for?
Well, we had hired another gentleman who did not last, so it's as a replacement.
Who didn't last?
Brian. Brian Newell did not last.
Twenty-four.
Not even.
Um, so it's just a replacement, so this will be our fifth full-time person.
But it would come out of the GL of, of full-time. But it would come out of the G L of full-time firefighters.
So this will bring us to five.
It'll bring us back.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Treasure our summers.
Yes.
Trusty crawl.
Yes.
Trusty Reiner.
No.
Trusty Foley.
No.
Trusty Laughlin.
Yes.
Clark, yes, Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Moving forward and new business nine. R and R invoice for our annual equipment maintenance. This is for the the oxygen filling station, correct, chief?
Yep, compressed air that we use in our breathing apparatus. And that they come in annually and do a maintenance service that piece of equipment to make sure. Our firefighters are breathing the clean proper air that they're supposed to be breathing. And that service come in at six seventy-five, fifty-eight. And I recommend that we take that out of G L two oh five, three, three, six, nine, seven, four, dot zero, zero, zero.
We have a recommendation of the chief to move forward with. The service maintenance agreement of R and R for the. Air filling station that cost of six hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty-eight cents to come out of two oh five, three, three, six, nine, seven, four point zero, zero, zero. There a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Further discussion.
This is required maintenance, as I understand.
Yes, this is actually, I believe we're into the third year of the contract. I've, I've, it's either the second or the third year. This was a discovery two or three years ago by this board. That the maintenance. Like many other things in this township. Wasn't really there. So no reason to stay in the past. Looking forward. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Trusty crawl.
Yes.
Trusty Reiner.
Yes.
Trusty Polly.
Yes.
Trusty left.
Yes.
Their Flavich, yes, Treasure Larry Summers.
Yes, but can I ask a question?
Supervisor Skibby, sir.
Yes. Any question?
This G L is equipment. We don't have a maintenance.
We do not have.
Okay.
This is a piece of equipment. So it's.
Oh, it is? Okay.
Yeah.
I thought it was breathing maintenance. Thank you.
So. Yeah, moving forward. Item number ten, which is the the R and R truck repair for the twenty thirteen Spartan chief.
Yes, you probably have in your board packet, there was an original quote. To have this service work done to our engine two, which is housed down at South Side Station. There was a turbo actuator, some gaskets, some different connections and E X H gas valves. What was now allowing our turbo to work on the truck. They run several diagnostic checks on that particular piece of equipment. And we thought we were going to have to wait much longer because they thought this particular actuator switch was going to be on backorder. They worked a little bit harder and found it wherever they found it. They were able to perform the service for us. And it come in a little bit under what the original quote was for that service. So my recommendation is is that we would pay the bill of two thousand eight, six, twenty-one. That would come out of. Two oh five, three, three, six, nine, three, eight, dot zero, zero, zero.
How much? So can you please, because we don't have the most up to date estimate or invoice?
Email.
Okay, two thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars.
Two thousand eight hundred thirty-six dollars and twenty-one cents.
Say that number again, please.
Two thousand eight hundred thirty-six dollars and twenty-one cents.
And your recommendation on a G L again, chief?
Uh, it would be two zero five, three, three, six, nine, three, eight, zero, zero, zero.
Vehicle maintenance. We have a recommendation of our chief to move forward with the repair to the turbo on our E two. Is there a motion to that?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table. Is there support? Or it's been moved and supported. Any further discussion?
I may have an old copy, Laura, but what's our balance in that line?
Unfortunately, it's a lot less than that.
Yeah.
There wasn't enough money in there.
Yeah, this was January thirty-one.
And three thousand five sixty-two, twenty-two.
That's all we have left in there.
And I will be after this meeting, I'll be. Taking care of the budget adjustments so we can print off the most up to date budget report at later today.
So we're going to use that.
Well, he's going to pay the bills, so why don't you wait till after tomorrow?
Between now and April first, chief, you got any other thing, any other vehicle maintenance you're expecting?
Well, trustee Reiner, I wish I had a crystal ball for that. I'm 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 hoping not, but I don't foresee anything. That of at this point in time, but there again. Equipment, who knows?
This was a breakdown in the last month.
That is correct. And my apologies for not being able to be there today, folks.
Didn't we just pay a bill in the last month for R and R on the same engine number two?
Yeah, I believe that was for a heater motor in the pump compartment that had failed melt in the. The fan motor to the of the particular housing brackets.
Is there twenty thirteen?
Yes.
That it is.
I think we still have one or two more payments.
Coming in. Two.
Yeah, I want to see two, too.
I'll drop the hammer and take Tim home. Moving forward, item eleven is a an invoice from ten ten.
Make a motion.
Oh.
We didn't agree to pay this.
Sorry, roll call. Well, if there's no other discussion upon the repair for E two, roll call.
Trusty Reiner.
Yes.
Trusty Paul.
Yes.
Trusty Laughlin.
Yes.
Third Flavich, yes.
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 Supervisor Skibby.
Yes.
Just to draw with the motion, trusty left.
So moving forward, new business item eleven, ten, ten invoice.
Yes, Supervisor Skibby had a couple of computer units that were. Available, I believe, at the township. And the he recommended that we have or ten ten recommended that we have the. Two computers down at South Station. Upgraded because they were very old. So apparently they took that, the two computers that Supervisors could be recommended. And had them programmed and put back into position down at station two. The bill was. Sorry.
Seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ten cents.
Thank you. You got to it quicker than I was able to. However, in our technology. Two zero five, three, three, six, nine, two, one, dot zero, zero, zero. It's insufficient funds in that I'm recommending that we would move five hundred dollars from which would be my uniform allowance budget. Of two zero five, three, three, six, seven, two, four, dot zero, zero, zero. To make that payment to ten tech, not ten tech, not ten, ten technology. Sorry, little tongue twister there for me.
Hey, we have a recommendation. Twofold of a budget adjustment and the expenditure of the invoice of seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ten cents. Does anybody want to make a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion to the effect of a budget transfer and the expenditure of seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ten cents. Is there support?
Support.
Then moved and supported. Further discussion.
Have a question.
Yes, Laura.
What is go-to meeting playback issues? Do we? Don't we use Zoom all the time?
They go to meetings which you used to use, and I think that's defunct now, isn't it?
No, it's actually a third independent. I I don't know because once again, this is not. A micro managing effect of us. It is, I don't know why that is. Maybe it was somebody else hosting a meeting. And there was issues with it. Yes, you are direct. We utilize Zoom.
I was just curious.
We actually used a now defunct platform.
Not go to me.
It's not, it wasn't, I actually, I don't even want to say its name because I hated it, so.
If I might.
Yeah. So.
If I if I may Supervisor Skibby, if I may, I'll just touch base on that. I was quite shocked when I seen the bills. Well. We had a company that we're soliciting information from for our ongoing training and different things like that that I've been researching. I sent. Video out of this company's presentation. I don't know if you had trouble downloading that, but just a simple call for that. Because we were unable to view it. I was surprised that the total of what it costs is to have them look at why we couldn't get into this and watch a particular video. So I.
My suggestion, chief, is moving forward, utilize the platform that we have and is known to work.
Right. Well, that wasn't an option for us in this with this company. So that's why I. Just gave a quick call to the the ten ten. And, you know, you're thinking you're going to get a quick fix and it never turns out to be quick.
I totally agree.
So we have a motion and support to move forward with a budget adjustment and the expenditure of seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ten cents. Further discussion. Roll call.
Trusty Polly.
Yes.
Trusty Laughlin.
Yes.
Sir Flavich, yes. Treasure Larry Summers. Dusty crawl.
Yes.
Trusty Reiner.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Moving forward, are there any questions of the department reports? That have been presented? I think principally, yes.
I have one with work. Says onboard two full-time firefighters, M F Rs that we paid on calls. We just said we've lost one.
Yeah, but not till after we onboarded them.
Yeah.
We went through the whole process.
So we brought him on board and then.
And he worked one twenty-four hour shift and left.
What was his name?
Brian Newell.
You. Where'd he come from?
Myrtle Beach, South Carolina.
So are there any other questions of department reports? Chris pretty much covered his report in terms of the tribunal. In closed session. There again, if there's any way or any information and any department heads report that we can improve upon, please let me or the department head know so that we can address it appropriately.
I do have a question. On the building officials report. I'm just a little confused because it's it looks like they're both dated two, two of twenty-two. And then.
Well, she would have ran.
It was printed on the same.
Well, I know, but I I guess what's the difference of these?
Last year and this year.
Our year is twenty-one. And this year's twenty-two, twenty-two.
Okay, well, that's what I was trying to figure out. It would still be nice if they had a comparison on the one sheet.
She's working on it for next. That'd be great.
Trusty Paul.
Yes, that's the lay is on from the Planning Commission. At our next meeting, we are going to discuss the potential marijuana again. And if any board members would like to come to that meeting to find out what's really going on, I think it would be beneficial for them to attend. But we've done a lot of work so far, but we're not done yet. It's next Monday.
Fourteenth. It's the sweetest day of the year.
But what's the time?
Significant others, you have to go.
Yep.
We still have time to hear.
Yep. It's public comment. Public hearing has been satisfied at that level. But yes, by all means. As I, we've always told people in this capacity, please show up.
Does anybody have any questions for Kath?
Anybody have questions of the O and M?
Yeah, I might. Yeah, usually for me.
Your reports are so well done, man.
Trust, trustee Paul.
That's what I was going to say. It's just a pleasure to see your reports because they tell us what we're looking for. Thank you.
So and I believe that you said that you would be in town for our next budget hearing of which. The fifteenth. I believe we scheduled it for nine AM. If not, if you're by Zoom. Wonderful. That's a stipulation we always put forward, isn't it? With that being said, this is our second opportunity for public comment. If there's any public comment online, please use the bottom password. Under the tab more to raise your hand or send a message so that we can address you appropriately. Seeing no additional public comment, this is the last opportunity for discussion amongst the board. If not, I would entertain a.
Yes, I'd like to try to set a date for this for the fire committee meeting.
Okay, well, we can do that after this.
All right, that's fine. Just as long as we get it squared.
Copy that. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion on the table to adjourn. Is there support? It's been moved and supported that supported to adjourn. Further discussion. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye. Opposed, the same. Meeting adjourned at twelve thirty-eight. Thank you very much.